Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting order for October 27th, 2021. We'll start with the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose full liberty and justice for all.
We'll go down to Town and Municipal Street, weekly update.
So with the winter layoffs at the transfer station, as you have each year, one of them brought the, those were handled on Saturday, but with that and the combination of new position, the handyman position that was incorporated into the new superintendent, the individual that was serving as the handyman chose not to work out his, the two-week notice that the board had, you know, tried to give him. So with that being said, I need a selectmen on Friday to, if not tomorrow, because the weather looks a little better, I really need the sign changed out front. The taxes were due on the 15th, they've come and gone. The library really wants the crockfest up there. You have to be covered insurance-wise to a certain degree before I can put you on a ladder. And I thought, hmm, got two male selectmen that might be able to climb a ladder and put it up there. You'd be doing it under your selectmen.
I'll do it, yeah, I'll do it tomorrow night, if that's okay.
Yeah, just make sure it's not dark out. Many municipal wouldn't like that.
Sign lights up.
Yeah, but I don't want you on a ladder after dark.
No, I'll do it this minute.
We have the letters pulled already, Cheryl, I think, for what it's gonna say? All right, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I get out at 4:30, so I'll, uh, 3:30, so I'll stop you on the way home.
Yeah, I'm not sure what time I'm gonna be back, so.
Either that or Friday, too, whatever day is better for you.
I'm working Friday, so.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, that's all ready for you.
Yep.
So I did get the keys from that. The other piece will have a little issue with trash over the next couple of weeks until you take over the new position, but I'm gonna send our code officer up with the trash. He didn't say no, so.
Just give me a ring if I happen to be in here, I'll take it.
I have quite a pile out there piling up, so. They're opening again, what, Saturday, so maybe I'll remind you Saturday morning you can grab it?
If you don't get it, I can, I go pretty much every Saturday anyway, so.
Perfect. As long as it's gone when I come in Monday, I'll be happy.
We'll take care of it.
Perfect. Make sure you get that in writing, Cheryl. You're gonna get a new American Rescue Plan packet. Originally, just in kind of discussion, roundtable discussion with the treasurer when she was first telling us about this, we've had very little discussion about it, but we had talked about possibly just taking the chunk of American Rescue money that was given to Acton and dividing it up over all the property owners. Just a good flatway, yeah, we can do that now. So this is a packet, and in there it talks about what exactly these funds are for, what they can be used for. Now, the townspeople are gonna have to approve it, so my plan is, is that after we have the election for the new selectmen and we start the budget season, because it's gonna be on the June warrant, that we have to have public hearings on it as well. One of the few things that we know that we can do with these funds is deal with the water issue that we have. They've approved that, and they are starting to improve some of the culverts. Somehow they're tying that into the funds, that some culverts can be paid for. Of course, pretty much anything can be done at the fire and rescue with it, because these are COVID funds. They are encouraging anybody that worked, emergency personnel, certain municipal staff that worked through the pandemic, they can get pay relief. So there's a bunch of things in there, but you do need, you know, legislative approval, but I really need you to look at this, this is updated through October 1st. Michelle has been attending all the hearings, but once we get into budget season, we'll start really diving into it and having some public hearings on how the voters think.
We can't do a generator though at the Public Safety Building?
I'm sorry?
We can't do a generator at the Public Safety Building?
No.
Okay. What about, I had a chat with one of our reps, state reps, and the thought came up about high-speed internet access, something like that. To get that boosted up, where so many people are working at home, from home, if we could get Atlantic broadband to boost that up, if that would be covered.
Yeah, I certainly.
So that was one thought. I think he said that Sanford was thinking about trying that.
Yeah, and I think most of the towns have, most of the towns have kind of taken it, and one of the first things most of the towns have done is said, it's okay. How much are we gonna give the person, the people that worked? Let's say, okay, we have 50 employees that qualified. You know, we're gonna give them all a thousand dollars each. I'm just throwing a number out there. Take that first, deal with that, figure out what's left, and then start subtracting. It's interesting, some of the things that they find are eligible or not, but.
I don't understand the culverts.
Yeah, I couldn't tie it in my hands, that was one of them. Michelle, Michelle came to me today and she says, guess what, we can.
It flowed through court as well during COVID.
You can, she says, you can buy culverts with the American Rescue money. I'm like, okay, so.
I mean, we have high-speed internet, but I have higher-speed internet.
So it talks about who essentially, anyways. It's interesting, but we really need to start moving on it and thinking about what we're gonna do with this money. We have received half of it, but it's just sitting in a account, so. And we'll certainly, like I said, it'll be a warrant article, so we need to have some public hearings. I did, just for the record, even though last week you did adopt it, just wanted to make note that we did receive a written resignation from Mr. Walsh officially. It still has the same November 5th date on it, so we have that for the file. A new main law that passed that I thought was interesting for you to be aware of, and I emailed you the link, is an act relating to fair chance unemployment. The new law prohibits employers from inquiring about individuals' criminal history on an initial employment application and from stating in employment advertisement that an individual with a criminal history may not apply. It does, the law does go on to clarify that if you get down to a final candidate, then you're allowed to ask certain things about the criminal background, but you can no longer ask it in the beginning phases, because you pass a drug test or a background test or a driving test, so.
You can't ask that until you're into the second phase?
Uh, final phase.
Final phase.
Yep.
Well, it was just before you give him the job, yeah.
That doesn't make any sense at all.
Well, the main legislation, it's in your email. The auditors have sent over a draft of the audit. They've sent it to the treasurer and to the finance director at the school. They've gone back and forth with some items. Most of the things they pointed out were school-related, but we did send you a copy of it, and they're just kind of going back and forth with it, so. You'll be getting something soon. Freedom of Information Act has been updated by Augusta, and LD 1346 now says that changes the amount of free research from one hour to two. So now municipalities have to give two hours of free research rather than the one. And the hourly rate goes from $15 to $25. So after two hours now, we can charge $25 an hour rather than the 15. LD 1345 also changed the rate of copies that we can charge from 25 cents to 10 cents.
So it dropped the rate to 10 cents.
Both go into effect on Monday, October 18th. So Cheryl and I will work on updating the freedom of information policy, because we certainly need to be in line with the state guidelines. So another law passed from your legislators. Zoning Board of Appeals met on Monday. We had a variance request, it's a very small piece of land on 35th Street that couldn't meet all but one of the setbacks. This is a driveway setback, they were looking for 27-foot variance to be able to make it a billable lot. They met all, everything else. After discussion and review, the ZBA did approve it, so that was on Monday. Last thing is smoking. Some concerns have come up in a couple of different places in town about smoking, so we really need to get on board and put some sort of.
Municipal buildings.
Municipal buildings, right. And we won't, we will pick on the town hall, because that would be closest to my building, so no department feels, you know. If someone's walking up the walkway to come in and register their car, they shouldn't pass somebody smoking. If somebody's dumping their trash at the hopper, they shouldn't pass somebody smoking. Customers dumping the trash at the hopper shouldn't be smoking. We've gotta have some sort of policy in place that, you know, you're either gonna need to put no smoking on town properties, or you can do, you know, 25 feet away from buildings, or something like that, and have a designated smoking area. Either one is acceptable, but taxpayers need to be able to get to the building and get to their place that they're going without being, you know, being bothered by smoke. And the opposite is that staff working shouldn't have to, you know, worry about the hopper going up in flames as you're throwing trash with one hand and cigarette the other.
Yep. Just with the other.
What are your thoughts? What do you wanna do? I don't know, if you wanna talk to department heads, get opinions?
I like the 20, I like the 25 to 30 foot, you know, whichever we wanna use.
Away from the, we wanna say the entrance or away from a town building?
Away from town buildings, or away from town structures.
Twenty, so no smoking within 25 feet of all town structures?
Yep, thinking, okay, thinking transfer station, for instance. That's really, that's really the only place where there are structures that are not necessarily buildings, I guess.
It'll be like the little salt, little shed down at the salt.
Little salt shed down here. The salt shed at the transfer station, the containers out back at the transfer station. They're not really buildings, they're structures, I think. You know, there's plenty of, there's plenty of places to smoke around, but just not within the buildings. Really, any place that a cigarette butt, for instance, can be blown into a building or into a structure. When I had my moving company, I was government-regulated, and that was one of their rules. They didn't want a cigarette butt being blown into a warehouse that was still lit, so.
Most of the surrounding municipalities have no smoking on town property.
Yep.
But, I mean, there's nothing wrong with the 25 feet, you know, 30 feet, they can smoke in their car.
Right.
Residents hopefully can stop smoking long enough to get through the transaction.
Yeah.
And we did have a guy walk through the front door with a cigarette, too.
Sure. I mean, it's not as prevalent now as it used to be back in the 70s, 80s.
Right.
Bait myself here, but, I mean, I know there were some firefighters over there that smoked, some of the pretty young guys.
I smoked for many years.
And they're off to the, they're off to the side when they're smoking.
Yep. It's a safety for them, for the building, for the other residents coming, so. All right, what do you wanna do? Order some signs? Orders, do you want me to do any more investigating, or?
25 feet, so that's why.
25, yeah.
25 feet from all town structures. And we'll.
Structures slash buildings, however you wanna put it on there.
That might clear it.
Either way.
Yeah, I mean, we want a big bright sign.
You want the signs to be speed limits, well, not quite speed limit size, but, yeah.
Noticeable.
Like the, like the one we got out here that, for the code office, that.
Yeah, that's a speed limit sign, yep.
Yeah, that size.
But you know, nobody sees that.
Right.
They all come in the front door.
Yeah.
How do I get the codes?
Send it back out and dump all the signs.
No, no, we try not to do that, okay.
Dump them down, yep.
All right, so that's all I have for tonight. We'll order that and get the department heads hopefully to install them on their town properties.
Okay, warrant bills, you signed up?
I did.
Okay, I'm all signed up. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve, oh yeah, approve the agenda? Yeah, I'll make a motion, approve the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion, approve the minutes of October 20th? I think that's the only one we have, correct?
Yeah, that's the only one. I'll second that, all in favor? Okay, department head committee chair updates.
Adam got the message about the Beaver?
Yes, he did.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you much. Awesome. Okay, I guess we're gonna go down to old business. Oh, no, there's no old business, new business. Nomination papers for a selectman's seat.
So two things as we go over this. Once Kim notified me that she was out sick tonight, I did speak to Richard Flowell in a main municipal to make sure that there was no conflict with Ed voting on this motion, and there absolutely is not, so just so that's clear and on the record. Anytime there's a vacancy in the Board of Selectmen, the selectmen have the authority to shorten the nomination paper availability and to shorten the filing deadline. Normally, it is 85 days before the election, and then the filing deadline is 40 days before that. In going over the dates with the, with legal, this is the recommendation, is that nomination papers for Ed's seat actually become available tomorrow. They will have until 11:12, so it's a little over two and a half weeks to get 25 signatures. So the deadline to turn in nomination papers would be on November 12th. Absentee ballots will then be available the very next day, November 13th. So ideally, you know, we've got the ballots ready, we just need to type in the names of who turns it in. And that would make election day on December 14th. The one piece that they recommend you not shorten is the 30 days for absentee balloting. So if we make nomination papers available tomorrow, like I said, that's a little over 12, 13, 14, 15 days to get signatures. We will blast it everywhere, run it in the paper, Facebook, website, cable, everywhere we can to get the word out, so. That's my recommendation. If you decide to take it, someone does need to make a motion, or you can certainly adjust those days, and obviously I haven't spoken to either one of you about it. But we really, you know, with a three-man, three-person board, you know, with weather and illnesses, I mean, we don't wanna run on a two-member board any longer than we have to.
Yeah, I don't see why.
No.
Do it as soon as possible.
We have to do it as soon.
I just feel bad that I'm putting everybody through all this, but it's just the way it works. So I'll make a motion that we shorten the period for the nomination papers available, shorten the filing deadline for the open seat of selectmen. Officer of the poor, it's expiring June 24th, as indicated below, so the nomination papers will be available on the 28th. Deadline to turn them in is on 11:12. Absentee ballots will be available on the 13th, and election day will be December 14th.
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay, B, open committees.
I'm just wanting to kind of go through the list of open committees that we have, stressing one, again, more than, more than any, or actually two. So we now have two zoning board of appeals alternates open. Even though it's a five-member committee, the zoning ordinance calls for four being a quorum, so we really need to fill those ZBA alternates if we can. RET committee is the big one that I'm gonna put another plea out to. There are two members on the RET committee. They are talking about the tree lighting the first week of December. Somebody has got to step up and help these two women. I mean, there's just not gonna be a tree lighting, there's not gonna be basketball. I mean, they are giving all they have, and they need some help. So I don't know what else to do with that. Talk to your friends and neighbors, and even if you don't wanna be on the RET committee and you just might wanna help with the tree lighting, I think it's on December 4th. That would be great, you know, send Jive's over, they can help. Send Jive's, yourselves, gentlemen. We have a warrant and finance alternate member, because as you're gonna see in the appointments coming up with the resignation of Mr. Waterhouse, one of our alternates is being moved up per the ordinance, and we'll talk about that. And the cemetery committee open. We still have a planning board alternate open, that's been open. And then the conservation forest. Road committee has been taken off here, because I do have a name to present to you tonight for that, so. Any ideas on how we can get more people involved in some of these committees?
No idea.
I wish I did.
I mean.
Advertising is the only way to do it, word of mouth, unless we.
Yeah, I mean, the RET committee, I have a couple of people I might talk to.
I did get one call on it today, and she's fantastic and a little firecracker, so she'd be perfect for it, so I'm hoping she'll follow up tomorrow. Even just to help, you know, I mean, if, you know, for just an event or two would be helpful.
I might be on guilt and a couple of people can do it. Okay, upcoming holiday closures.
Appointments?
Oh, I skipped appointments, I'm sorry about that. Appointments, C, appointments.
Okay, so going back to the warrant and finance, the warrant and finance ordinance says that when there's an opening of a standing regular member, that an alternate with that same term be moved up. So Mr. Bernard Broder is an alternate expiring in June of '22, which is when Mr. Waterhouse's term ended. So this is an appointment for Mr. Broder to be moved up as a regular member on the warrant and finance until June of '22. Yoli Gallagher is, was currently an alternate member with the resignation of Mr. Waterhouse. She has agreed to move up to a regular member, so that's her appointment.
That's on what committee?
Zoning board.
Zoning board, okay.
Yeah. And then the, Richard Blakeney, he is a municipal employee for neighboring town. He has showed interest in the road committee, so with your approval, he's gonna be appointed to the position that Mr. Pat Stevens declined after town meeting.
Okay.
We really oughta look into how, that's happened twice, I believe, that somebody's been nominated at town meeting and the person's refused.
Afterwards.
Whether or not we have to have some sort of, I don't know.
We did have something in place, you had to be.
Well, it's a, we've checked the law, it's a moderator discretion. I mean, normally, you know, we try to reach out to everybody that's on a committee and say, hey, do you mind if they get reappointed? A lot of people will come to us.
But the problem is, is that, like this individual, he's refused it twice, and somebody's nominated, and what ends up happening is there's an individual that's actually there in the audience that would get nominated and didn't get on because that went first and took the spot, and then we end up turning it around and having to nominate somebody else that we prefer.
Advertise it, yeah.
So myself, anybody that would be on one of these committees, I would think would have to be there to accept the nomination.
We'd have to probably have to put an ordinance or something in place.
So that's what I'm talking about, I mean, 'cause, you know, we don't want to have this reoccurring, because, you know, you could manipulate the system and put people on there, and then they'd say, no, no, we don't, that we can turn it up wherever we want on it, you know?
You can do what Shapley does, and all of these are elected by secret ballot, just like selectmen's school committee. I mean, you don't get on the budget committee, or RET committee, or any of those committees over there, unless you go through the nomination process that, you know.
I don't know if that's such a, I mean, we haven't had enough time getting people to say they wanna be on it, let alone.
Well, but that way they're guaranteed, you know they wanna be on it.
Yeah, yeah, you have to put the work into it, but, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just thinking that we could look at it down the road.
Maybe for a few of these.
You know, yeah, you know, that, you know, like, you know, forestry and, you know, these smaller committees there, instead of just throwing someone's name and say, yeah, you're on, and they come and say, oh, I ain't got time for that. Then somebody else may have wanted to be on that committee and got voted out.
No, it makes sense.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking maybe we can just, maybe put something forward that, you know, gotta be on, be out to me.
Yep.
So, sorry about that.
Ready?
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay, certificate of appointment, title 30A, MRSA 2602, selectmen's office, municipality of Acton, Maine, to Richard Blakeney, the selectman of the municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as road committee member within and for the municipality of Acton until 6/30/2024, given under our hand this 27th day of, of October 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
I'm not gonna bother reading the whole thing of this, 'cause I've just read the whole thing. This one here would be for Yoli Gallagher, zoning board of appeals, regular member, until 6/30/2023.
I'll second that. All in favor?
And this one would be for Bernard Broder, warrant and finance committee member. This'll be a regular member, until 6/30/2022.
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay, that's all the appointments. Now we're gonna go upcoming holiday closures.
All right, so according to the personnel policy, we are closed on Thursday, November 11th, because that is Veterans Day, and then we are closed Thanksgiving, the 25th, the 26th. We've always been closed the day after Thanksgiving, it's an unpaid holiday, but we just need your blessing on the day after. 25th is paid, 26th is not.
We've done it, yeah, yeah.
Christmas is a little different this year, so I'd like to kind of reach out to staff to talk to them. Christmas actually falls on a Saturday this year, so the transfer station, of course, will be closed. It's just the Friday after, the Christmas Eve, I'm gonna ask the staff.
So Christmas is on a Saturday?
Christmas is on a Saturday, so.
So really, you'd be taking a Friday off, maybe Christmas Eve?
I am hoping that the staff agrees that they wanna be closed on the 24th, it'll be an unpaid holiday. And then, New Year's Eve will probably work till at least noon time, I mean, that's not generally much of a holiday.
They can use their vacation time to do that.
Vacation weekend time, yeah, so, but I'll get back to you on Christmas, but just to make sure we're clear on November, we're good for Veterans Day and the two days of Thanksgiving? And don't forget, we have the election next week and that motor vehicle training I mentioned.
Okay, Tattle Street emails.
Okay, so I got an email today that says, "I am going to need an official answer as to the status of Tattle Street. I need to know if it's a public road, public easement, or private road subject to gates and chains. Also, I need to know if a butter's actually owned to the center line as indicated by the town tax map, and if a butter's have legal rights to the center line." So I replied that I would put it on the agenda for tonight. My next email says, "I've also attached any known easements on Tattle Street for the record. It appears a portion of Tattle Street was given as an easement to the town as part of Wentworth Pines Estate Agreement for Possible Future Widening. Might I remind you of the maintenance agreement and deed and covenants I sent to the CEO and yourself earlier?"
I'm not answering any of those questions, 'cause that's, that's a setup.
So.
Some of those, I mean, gates and bars, and it's, you could be a private road.
Gates and chains, it's not gates and chains, it's gates and bars.
It's supposed to be gates and bars, and that's a private road issue. I think I'm, I wanna stay away from that.
So the last time we got a lot of questions, the last time the questions came about Wentworth Pines is that this individual believes that there are stipulations, that the planning board, and this is why he's trying to tie it to the town, so the planning board put certain stipulations in this subdivision. So what his question is, is, or what his question was, is if the planning board said A, B, and C has to happen in this subdivision, whose job is it to enforce it?
Wentworth Pines was put through, okay, went through the planning board. The planning board had absolutely no authority to make it a town road, which they didn't, they didn't. It was a private road. When they went through the planning board, they subdivided the properties. They made them put their sister and system in, which they're allowed to do, okay? And in the, I believe in the minutes of the planning board, they, and they put down that it had to be maintained by the subdivision, okay? Well, what he's trying to claim is, because the subdivision went in, then anybody who lives on the Wentworth Pines, part of the subdivision, is responsible for the road, he's not.
The whole, the whole of Tattle Street.
Exactly, so, but the problem is, if you, you go back to what state statutes say, anybody that lives on that road has a right of way through that road, has obligation to maintain the road. So through, through a, you know, statutory road association or something like that, doesn't have to be statutory, it could be other road associations, but, so. So at the end game is trying to turn it back, saying the town approved that, so that means the town's responsible for it, which we're not, like any other, like Eagles Trace or anything like that, any road that's been approved through the.
Yeah, if you look at it that way, then, then the hopper road would be, have to be maintained by Eagles Trace, in a way.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, I get, yeah, I get, I never thought of it like that.
So one of the, one of the stipulations, I'm just telling you what it's pointing out, because somebody's gotta answer to him, is that, so in the deeds, it says, "Subject also to easements granted to the town of Acton by Heritage Land Company for the purpose of maintaining and possible future widening and/or alignment of 34th Street."
No, I don't believe that was ever done, and the only easement that we have, I believe, on that road is for around the sister and system itself. And he did try claiming that because we have an easement to that, that means we're responsible for the whole road, which at the, then you would come into this big quagmire, because any road, any subdivision that the planning board of the town of Acton ever approved means we have to take care of them all, which you'd have to, by law, go to.
Or if we had an easement for a turnaround for a bus.
Exactly, so.
So that, that's what this next one is that he sent, is it's an easement deed that Heritage Land hereby grants the town of Acton and municipality existing under the laws as they filed at the registry, all the grantor's properties running within it, including a distance of 25 feet from the center line. He sent us the easements.
But the town never took.
They had to vote to take the easement, did they ever take it?
Did we ever vote to make it a town road? That's the only time it would be.
I'd have to check.
Ninety-seven, I mean, and the thing is, too, is when it says the center line of the road, it all depends on what the easement is down through there, if it's a 50 or a two rod or whatever. And I believe, going down, 'cause I've done work down there, done houses down there, property lines aren't to the center of the road.
Right.
So they may be, if you go down further and further than what the town used to take care of, but on actual Tattle Street, well, it's actually 30, it's not, we don't call it Tattle Street anyways, do we? Tattle Street, Tattle Street goes up to the left anyways, it's 30, 34th Street.
How am I gonna answer this email?
I'd rather see a town lawyer, 'cause I, I'm not.
Well, that's gonna cost you a lot of money, 'cause that's gonna go back and forth for some time. Well, that's going to cost you a lot of money, because that's going to go back and forth for some time. I mean, if you want me to turn it over to Lankowski, I certainly can, but we've asked him before, and he keeps telling us it's a private matter.
This is, this is a private road issue, and it's, I believe it's.
So as far as the status of the Tattle Street, we're not even answering, we're not answering that?
So what if we just send it back and say, this is not a town road?
We've already done that.
We're not, yeah, we're not going to answer any more questions on this, and just call it good? If he wants to take us to court, take us to court.
I mean, it's, it's up to his, his burden to prove that, you know, we've done wrong. And we, at this point, as far as I know, that was part of the list back in '06, it was on the list of being voted out, and it was, correct?
I believe so.
I'm not.
Because we used to take care of that road, and then that was one of the roads.
We haven't taken care of it in how long?
Since '06, I believe, '06 or '07. And so.
We've spent way too much money on this road and this whole ordeal already.
Yeah, I mean, this is over and over and over. And honestly, I'm, I don't want to spend any more money on it because I believe this is a waste of our time. So I think you're right. It's not a town road, if he can prove that it is, he can.
So I'm going to say that.
Then we'll have our town lawyer deal with it after that.
Just that it's not a private road and we have no other opinion.
It is a private road.
This is a private road, and we have no other opinion on it.
Okay, down to resignation.
We received a resignation from Julie Vanel. She is an alternate member on the Saco River Corridor and indicated that she, Dear Jennifer, this is my letter of resignation as an alternate member for the, from Acton for the Saco River Corridor Commission. We have two members on that. The good news is, one of them is looking to stay on it, and the other.
Mr. Crespey?
Um, yes, no.
I think it is a Saco River Corridor, right?
Yes, yes.
So yeah, that was Mr. Crespey.
But, so we have another opening. I need you to accept that resignation.
What was the name again?
Julie Vanel.
Julie Vanel. I make a motion, we accept a resignation from Julie Vanel for this. All in favor? Okay. Okay, I guess we'll go to public comment. Any public comment? No? Only once going twice? Okay, announcements, on November 3rd, Board of Selectmen, 6 o'clock. November 4th, Planning Board, 6 o'clock. November 8th, Conservation and Forest, 7 o'clock. November 9th, Road Committee, 6 o'clock. November 9th, Warrant and Finance Committee, 6:30. November 10th, Select Board, Board of Selectmen, 6 o'clock. November 15th, Rec Committee, 5:30. November 17th, Board of Selectmen, 6 o'clock. November 18th, Planning Board, 6 o'clock. And November 24th, Board of Selectmen, 6 o'clock. Got anything?
One quick thing, and it came to mind as you were reading this, the Conservation Forestry Committee. I was originally going to go to that meeting, because I'm, I think I'm the liaison to it. I'm not going to be a selectman at that point in time, so someone else needs to hopefully attend that meeting.
And hopefully they can have it, the last couple have had to be canceled.
It's the 8th at 7 o'clock.
I may be able to do it, so.
I'll fill you in on.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we never, we ended pre-COVID with an issue, remember?
Right, and that's the same issue coming back up again.
I would deal with it anyways.
Yeah, so that has, has looping back around.
I just want to make sure that we had a replacement to go in there.
Okay, well, I guess do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn?
I'll second that. All in favor? Good night, everybody.